We need to do, okay, so I've been working with Ed on this. He is probably not going to be here tonight.
He is not. He knew you had it under control.
We've been working together on it, so, just so you know, we are in this new finance system that we're working through and the budget has to be categorized in different ways according to the system, so you'll see.
So the change this year is the K-12 location-wide option now?
Yeah.
Right.
That's what made it different from last year.
Yeah, and things got shuffled around based on positions, so it was complicated. I think I've shared it in a way that isn't too complicated for everyone. But those subpay tuition reimbursements, they've all been broken out under the correct categories, so we've worked to do that. Okay, so these are just our current numbers for you of students.
Those are next year's numbers or these are your current?
These are the current enrollment numbers. Linda's working on pre-K numbers for me now. I don't have those yet. These are the high school numbers. I think I shared these with you. Linda did clarify, we do have seventeen students graduating from Hanover High School this year. Out of the thirty-six graduating seniors.
Part of what's...
There's some savings there. These are the position, the kind of larger additions to the budget, the SRO position. Increase in the music, part-time music teacher from point four to point six. A request for STEAM materials to support this program. Behavioral interventionist. The dual enrollment bus. A teacher/interventionist position and additional nurse services. So those are the kind of ones that stand out.
What's a dual enrollment bus?
That's the algebra.
That's the algebra bus. We call it dual enrollment.
Yes.
And we did talk about seeing how well that goes this year and potentially adding Spanish.
We've talked about a foreign language.
Next year, so possibility.
So would the cost go up or would just all the same kids be on the same bus?
They'd just be the same kids.
Same bus. It would be scheduling, figuring out that kind of thing.
The schedule, right.
And if the teacher's willing.
And you have foreign language, but it would be the same sort of theory that you, that the student would be able to transcript the high school credit and then start.
So it would be for kids who are kind of advanced in Spanish.
Exactly, exactly.
And did we look at all at doing things electronically?
Oh, you know...
With the current algebra class?
Yeah.
We talked about it. We haven't done it yet.
No, we haven't done it yet, no.
But we should probably think about practicing that just to see if it works.
Yeah, we have for help and that sort of stuff, but not in any great detail.
Yeah, just, it would, it's not just the cost.
Right, no, because that's a pretty reasonable cost.
Yeah, but it's more the time that the kids are traveling and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it just opens up all kinds of possibilities for like one kid taking, you know, eleventh grade English if they're really, you know, and you could do some really interesting things like that.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the enrollment for the actual class?
Right now?
What's the, not the enrollment, the cost?
Nothing.
There's no cost.
Just the bus, right?
It's at Windsor. Because it's all the same.
Because there's capacity in that class.
Yeah, they had capacity.
If there wasn't capacity, it wouldn't have worked.
Windsor also looks at it as a little bit of a recruiting mechanism, right? I mean, they, hey, over the next couple of years, we can get some of the high achievers excited.
And those kids are having positive...
So they've donated, they've donated the teachers.
They're doing really well. It's working very smoothly.
So far, so good.
The behavioral interventionist, how, is that a full-time position?
It is, it's split. It's with HCRS, so it's a...
Oh, okay, so that's, yeah.
Yeah, it's partly Medicaid-funded, yeah.
All right. So this is a breakdown of, so I've broken down each category. Ed ran the object codes, I think he called it. So this is a total, the total budget for wages. And you've got the budgeted amount for FY nineteen, the actual amount, of course, the budgeted amount for this year. We don't know where we're going to land exactly. And then this, the budget for next year. This includes that music position that we talked about and an additional teacher salary. And I did increase the substitute line based on where we land in our substitute line.
Okay.
So we're going over in that area.
We're going way over, yeah.
Yeah. Of course, I can't see my notes because they're under here. We, the FY nineteen actual was thirty-seven thousand ninety-seven dollars, so we're hopeful that we can decrease that a little bit. So we budgeted for thirty-four or five for FY twenty-one.
I mean, that's a position.
Yep.
Without benefits, but that's a, that's a sub, a permanent subposition.
Yep.
Yeah.
And just so you know, Ed has budgeted for an increase in wages, but because they're in negotiations, that's subject to change, but he did, he did budget for that. So that's included in that.
I guess I was thinking the sub, it's the size of the position, but there's multiple subs needed on Monday, which is not on every day.
Yeah, I mean, some districts hire a full-time sub.
Yeah.
From like October to May, but you would be paying benefits.
Benefits, right.
And that's one person, and sometimes more than four people.
Right, exactly.
And you're, you're, you are addressing it somewhat in negotiations?
Yes, attend, the attendance issue, yeah.
Okay. Total benefits, this reflects a twelve-point-nine percent increase in the premium costs, so you'll see a jump.
But this is nothing we have control over.
This is nothing we have control over.
Almost a hundred thousand dollars of the last year's budget.
Yep.
And that, by the way, is also subject to change because the state's negotiating that.
When will we know?
We have this package. We, we had hoped to know it. November fifteenth was when it was supposed to go to the object creator. They've got till December fifteenth, but we'll know by mid-December.
Okay. It could get better or it could get worse.
It could get better or it could get worse.
Worse, yeah. I mean, and costs are up for everybody, so I don't see it going down.
Probably not.
A lot. I, right, healthcare is more expensive.
Total contracted services, this includes that, the resource officer position, which is why you see a jump. That behavioral interventionist. The nurse support, and we did add three thousand dollars for the, at the request of the Acceptance and Understanding Committee, which is working on equity. This year, they're bringing in a consultant from Seed the Way to lead two half-day professional development sessions here at Heartland on equity, which is a really important thing that we need to do, so I fully support that work.
And what's the, to sup, to supplement the EPSD, what does that mean?
Yeah, that's, you missed that. The nurses and guidance counselors now have to, they get emails and they do timestamps and they have to, I've never seen what they do, but I see the emails. They have to report what they're doing.
They have to talk about what they're doing.
The moment in time, and that generates funds.
Through Medicaid.
Through Medicaid, and at the end of the year, we all sit down together and negotiate how we're going to use those funds.
And EPSD stands for early prevent, prevention, screening and something or other, you know, and Medicaid goes to pay for that. But the problem is that pot's getting smaller and smaller.
So we may have been getting ten thousand or something in the past and now it's gone to, we need to supplement it.
I think we got six this year.
I think you got about six, and there are other things that the schools like to do with that, like we, that's how we fund the tooth tutor, and that's how we fund some early prevention screening for kids. But this nursing, the nurses really seem to think they need that little bit of time every week to just either do some health work or proactive work, group work.
Teach some health class.
Paperwork, yes.
In the lower grades, hopefully eventually, when our nurse is up to speed, so that's what that is.
Sorry, my voice isn't working tonight, but the resource officer, is that in line with the estimates from last June and July?
Yeah, we're paying a portion. Windsor's paying a larger portion.
Windsor pays about forty-five, you pay thirty-five. And really, it's not like a three-day, two-day, I mean, he's here almost every day for a period of time, and he's at Windsor.
We call him regularly.
Every day for a period. Just seems to be that kind of guy. And you do call him regularly?
Yeah, nothing, I mean, it's not always major, but like...
Can you help us out with this? Could you talk to this kid? Right.
We have had some families request that he have some conversations with their children.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Which has been great. He helped us with our last staff meeting. We did some emergency training drills. He came and helped facilitate those, so he's been, he's been super helpful.
He's a great guy, too. Just happens to be, so much of it is the person, right? Whoever's doing the job, and he just happens to be good at what he does.
And I did email you. He did get that training that I talked about.
Yeah, he did email us.
Maintenance and repairs, down a little bit. I actually don't have much to do with this budget. This is an Ed.
Ed and Jim work on that.
And Jim work. Transportation is up, is up a little bit, and that does include that dual enrollment figure.
And a new bus contract, so that could change a little bit, too, right? Because this is the last year of our contract, so we mailed up, it means still like three or four companies. We should know by December, early January.
This is total energy, and I asked, originally, I was like, Ed, you can talk about this, but he's not here, so I have notes. He said in FY nineteen, we budgeted a dollar ninety-nine per gallon, but the price was actually two thirty-eight. So we spent more than we anticipated, which was a thirty-eight percent increase in the price of oil. For FY twenty, we budgeted two oh five. For FY twenty-one, we budgeted two seventeen. And he said in FY nineteen, this was also increased because it, we were ten percent, the temperature was ten percent colder.
Colder, yeah.
It was a cold. Okay. So that's why that is increased. Total equipment is down, and you'll see a reduction from nineteen to twenty, and that is because that was technology equipment that's now in the SU budget. We do, however, need a new laminator and shredder.
I support the shredder for sure. I had to use it the other day, and I spent an extended period of time fighting it.
This type of equipment doesn't cover kitchen equipment or anything like that?
No, not to my knowledge.
No. Well, I could, actually, I guess, yeah. I mean, but, and I know that Ed met with Craig, you know, to see what the needs were.
I just know Craig and...
But I think he's got that, to be honest with you, no, it would not be in this budget. It would be in the food service equipment budget, right? Because that's not part of the general fund.
But is that...
So you'll see, like, if I hand out that budget tonight to look at, I mean, you'll see there's equipment in line there.
In the food one?
In the food budget.
Okay, so...
And that's in a separate fund account.
Yep, it'll show up up here.
Heartland has a separate food budget that's not in the general fund.
Okay.
But you subsidize the food program out of the general fund.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Communication, insurance, postage budget went down just a little bit. We're trying to not mail if we don't have to. We saved a little bit on the printing of the town report, I think, because we over-budgeted for that. The S, total SU assessment is up by about sixty-five thousand. And I don't know if you want to speak to that. I have...
Well, no, just that, just that it was actually better than we had thought originally, because when you start expending the kinds of special ed money we're spending, you generate that much more revenue from the state. And Ed, Ed's, Ed's estimates, you know, because the truth is with the increase in IEPs that we've had, even just, let's say, in this building alone, and, and the staff that's required to handle those IEPs, not to mention the outer district placements. Because we've, we've run these numbers and we could run them for Heartland, we ran them for Weathersfield last year. It would, I'm sure it would exceed that sixty-five thousand dollar increase. I mean, I think the fact that we're sharing these costs across the SU and able to move people around a little bit does make a difference. Even though it's going up still, I wish, you know, I wish we could contain that cost, but I thought it would be worse than this, quite frankly.
I, as I did, too. I was actually surprised that it wasn't a larger cost. Here's that supply budget. I, Tina's specifics are listed and how much they cost. We did decrease, I wanted to try to offset it, so we decreased five thousand dollars in general supplies and we eliminated twelve hundred dollars. There was a tech, tech ed line, which we're not really teaching tech ed right now, to kind of offset a little bit of it. She had in the library budget last year, seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, so it's really an increase of fourteen-four that we've tried to reduce in other places.
And a lot of this is a one-time need, right?
Some of it, yeah, there are some, like the steam supplies she'll need to replace. There, there is a subscription, I think it's the MakerBot that is a per-student.
Per year.
Cost that she has to pay, yeah, per year. And the laser cutter is a one-time cost. The cricket, I don't know, that's what you have, right?
Yeah.
That's a one-time cost. And then these are the traditional library stuff that gets ordered.
And that's included in the fourteen-four.
That is included in this, yes. Well, in the, in the twenty-two, one fifty, yes.
The robotics, every, I mean, everything else I can kind of envision her using and, you know, the, does she, I mean, do we need to hire someone to do the robotics, or does she feel like she can do that and she has time, frankly, to do that?
She's offering, and her next elective is robotics.
Okay.
She's got the equipment out. She's been on the phone with the whoever she needs to be on the phone.
Do you know what the system she's using?
No idea. No, I do not.
Probably the Lego one is the one.
Yeah, they're, and they're, she's got their Mac, their older MacBook computers, yeah.
One, I, I did a, I was not very good at it, which is part of why I'm asking this question, but I led a robotics elective like years ago. And we got a lot of equipment donated from Lego, so presumably she's looked into that already.
Yeah, and we have equip, we have some equipment. I think some of that is a subscription to use some of the stuff.
Yep.
I believe.
Yep.
So that might be a reoccurring cost depend, and she's going to try it out in this elective and see how it goes.
Yeah.
And I think she's going to learn right alongside the children, which would be great.
As I discovered, it's very complicated. It was not my...
She's been doing a lot of visits to other schools as well.
Right.
Watching other teachers do this stuff.
Good.
Yeah.
My sister teaches Maker Space in Taiwan, like that's her new job that she got this past year. And it's her, it's middle school.
Wow.
They must do all that stuff, right?
Yeah, and it's pretty intense. I mean, they have hardcore machinery and all this kind of stuff there, too, but they, they, she started with robotics. And so it's really, it's, it's pretty amazing. And the robotics teams and stuff that they have to...
Oh, yeah, the competition.
Well, there are massive competitions.
It's pretty amazing.
And I just met with the Korea Technical Center directors, and they said that it really is the way of the future, and they're getting more competitive. Heart protect center and Springfield Tech Center for that matter, they're putting teams together and really trying to encourage kids to, to, to get involved. So, I mean, it really is the future, right, to some degree? Like it'll, you know, not, yeah.
So if we had to cut anything, she would, the laser cutter would be her choice. These are total access costs, down a little, and these are services related and related expenses for students with five or four plans.
Physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech, speech language, but not a special ed kid.
It could be services for the visually impaired. We have to pay for that. Equipment that goes along with that, and we have some, some of those needs, so...
And this is K-12, that's K-12, so that's all, so that includes anything that has to be provided at a receiving high school?
Right.
Okay, this is the food service, so this is an increase. This is the total dues and fees transfers. There is one thing that I know about more, and you can speak to the food service, the online research database. That is a request also coming from Tina. And she's found in her short time in this role that our kids need to work on their research skills and note-taking and summarizing and, and we can use Google, but an actual research base is recommended so kids can go on and find data that is accurate and has been tested.
Well, that's a whole other level of like education, too, of like, what can you Google and what can you trust and how do you figure that out?
Yeah, so that includes like, she told me today, Encyclopedia Britannica would be part of that, and that is, because what I've found, working with some of the kids on their passion projects, they're Googling and they, they're, they're not able to read what's in front of them. It's above their reading level. And so this would, this would allow some things to be read to them, it would, and there are different levels, so, yeah.
Do you want to go back to food services for a minute, just so we don't have to redo this?
Yeah, it's right here. It's included in this.
Oh, it's in that one? Okay, good.
Yeah.
And this is what's nice about doing budgets, and Craig and Ed and I have looked at this many, many times. Because you remember, it was really sort of an ad hoc affair of putting a budget together last year, so these numbers I think are a little more accurate.
I hope so.
Based on a lot of what Craig has ordered, and, which is why also the increase isn't just by bringing Windsor on board. It's also because we're, you know, we're figuring some actual costs and what it costs to buy a cow. But the other thing, too, is we haven't really factored in what I think is going to be an increase, especially for Heartland revenues. I mean, I think you're, you know, you've really, you're up fifteen percent anyhow. Staff is buying food, which is good. But the last time we ran this, it even got a little better for Heartland, because if you notice, Christine has thirty-eight, eight, twenty-one increase. But if you go down to the very bottom, it's really twenty-nine, seven, oh, two. So, you know, and again, that could go down with those revenues.
And that's increasing a whole staff person.
Exactly, that's increasing, putting a whole staff person in as an assistant. And it also doesn't, and this is where I think we're really potentially, Craig's vision is what I think Craig's vision is. It doesn't include, it, it, it's just what Windsor's serving now, so it doesn't increase. I'm sure, much like he did at Heartland, much like he's done at Weathersfield, he's going to increase participation in Windsor, too. So this is like a worst-case scenario, you know, that, that you're looking at a very conservative budget and, and sure, Weathersfield will be happy. They actually get a thousand, but...
We're going to see that extra hire at the SU.
It'll be an SU hire, right. And obviously, we'll have a committee like we did last time, and Craig will put out advertisements and will, he's, he's got, he's got some thoughts about some current staff.
When would we get the commitment from Scotty?
I'm pushing for that. They have a meeting on December fifth. I'm pushing for, so we'll know soon, real soon. They had their preliminary discussion the other night. They just had a couple of other more financial questions. Conceptually, they are on board, and they're excited about it. So, so, because I remember Nikki said, I want them to be excited about it, so I watched expressions.
They're, they're not like tripping over the, getting the unionized food service and everything?
No, I think when they realized, you know, I mean, it's going to cost them some money. You can see, they, they have the biggest increase, but most of that is, is the benefits for those employees, right? But I think they really bought into the fact that, you know, it's about equity of opportunity and the fact that we've got, you know, in that building, we've got support staff that have benefits, and then you've got this kitchen crew that doesn't have benefits. The other thing, too, is they'll be able to, I think, you know, they, they could hire some of the folks that are there now, but they don't have to. So they, they can, they can open it up and maybe with a little...
Isn't there some weird contract thing that you couldn't hire?
It was the management. We can't, like, we can't take Anton and make him our assistant, unfortunately, because he's pretty good at it. He stepped up, you know? I mean, remember, a lot of what we based our decisions on was pre-Anton, right?
Right.
But, but, and we did start to push it up a little bit, but we can't touch management, but we could touch their employees. And by the way, I saw Bill who owns Cafe Services, and, you know, you've all met Bill and Chris, and, because they were at the Vermont School Boards Association. Did you go with him? No. And, and they, they sort of noticed this company. They said, they said, you lucked out. You, they know Craig, because Craig worked for a couple of other, they, he's never worked for them.
No, he's worked for other food services.
But they're well aware of him, and they've, as a matter of fact, they sort of insinuated, they tried to lure him into their, into their company a few years ago. They said, you got lucky, you know, and hopefully he'll stay with you. And we said that right along, right? If we find the right person, then, then there we go, you know, and I just, we just need to take good care of Craig. And this does include, because we sort of low-balled Craig last year, it includes a reasonable salary increase for Craig.
Weathers, were Weathersfield's revenues just so good that they're, that they're not going to have a...
No, actually, with Weathersfield, what they benefit from is going...
They're making out.
Right.
They are.
Is going with the equalized, we felt that was the best way, if all three participate, to use the equalized pupil. Whereas we just use pupil count in the building this time, so we use equalized pupil. If you notice, they go down to twenty-three percent, you go up to thirty-two percent, and Windsor hangs at about forty-three percent, but that's how we split all, everything we do across the SU, we do it by equalized pupil, essentially, right?
This feels a little different to me, though, because there are revenues involved.
Right, exactly.
I, I, I would...
We, don't we keep our revenue, though?
You do keep your revenue, which offsets, which is why, yeah, you do keep your own revenue.
So we keep whatever money we make.
There's still a Heartland fund, there's a Weathersfield fund. Remember, this is only the amount that you're subsidizing the program, right?
Right.
So...
But that's what worries me, are we subsidizing other schools?
No, because your revenue comes, Beth is absolutely right, your revenue comes back. Matter of fact, we just, matter of fact, all of the, like, the portrait of the graduate work that Craig's doing, just because you have the heaviest load right now, the last two, we've taken that revenue, right, from Windsor and from Weathersfield, and we've put it in the Heartland Food Fund. So you're actually gaining some revenue from specialized catering. We're going to have to figure that out as we go forward, you know what I mean? When we do the specialized catering, what that looks like.
Yeah, this is a complicated thing.
It is complicated.
Yeah, this feels different to me than special ed or any of, some of the other things that we do, but that's just to...
I can, I can see the equalized pupil every day in the running of the central office, even when a lot of Heartland and Weathersfield students are at high schools.
Right.
Because of the, your responsibility to everyone in your office for those students. I need more convincing how that transfers to feeding kids every day, because we're not feeding high school students.
Exactly. That's, that's exactly what I was just thinking.
Well, and Windsor has five staff, so we'd be paying, that's what this is, is us paying for one of their staff members.
Yeah.
I think that's what that, because this increase for them doesn't make sense if they have to hire five staff members.
And it could be that, that in the long run, that it makes sense, I just, I'm, and I hear that you want to keep, you know, us all, we need to all work together. And equalized pupil has worked well, and we're not, we're not tracking actual, actual, excuse me, spend spending. We're doing that by equalized pupil for a good reason.
Other high schools, too, like...
Yeah, and there's really good reasons for that. It keeps us from not having names on a board and...
The other, the other way to do this, you know, because we, Craig and I did talk about this with Ed, is, but this problem is associated with this, this is going to sound good upfront, but is that you only split the cost of the director and the, and the...
Assistant.
And the assistant, right?
And then everything else is yours.
And then everything else is sort of locally, sort of locally funded, right? The problem with that, from Craig's perspective, is that he feels he's done a lot better on buying when he buys across the SU.
That's what I was going to say, then, running, you know, somebody runs out of one school to take that shipment and bring it over to Heartland.
Which is what he's, what he's, what he's done, so it's not as, I, I understand what you're saying. But maybe we could flesh it out better, maybe it could be done more on number of kids in the building, right, which factors out the high school.
That seems to make sense.
That's a possibility.
That seems to make more sense.
Let me, let me, let me run it that way, and then, I mean, we're not, you know, obviously, it's in your budget, but we don't have to make that heavy decision tonight. I'll run it and get back to you with those numbers, okay?
Yeah, that would be helpful, because it, it doesn't feel right that we're increasing by thirty thousand dollars. Sorry, thirty, yeah, thirty thousand dollars.
Yep.
When we're not changing anything.
Do we feel, are we, we do not need any more staff in our kitchen?
I was wondering that.
We have the part-time.
You actually have a part-time person.
That's shared between Weathersfield and Heartland.
He goes back and forth some. He's mostly here, to be honest with you.
He's typically here when Craig is in Weathersfield, like, I think that's the swap.
Right.
Because Craig is in both places. His name is...
And like on Thanksgiving, like Wednesday, last week.
Gee, I'm mad at my...
Gee, Marie.
No, the assistant, he's super nice. No, it begins with G. I think it begins with G.
Gary.
It's not Gary.
Greg.
I thought it was Dan.
George.
It's not a common name.
No, it's not Gavin, but anyway, Gary.
Gino, no.
He's, he's here typically when Craig is not.
He's good at what he, he's good. He was a good hire, and he's flexible. He'll go anywhere we ask him to go.
And he comes in for just a couple hours a day.
And that's needed, for sure.
Yeah.
Like, that is definitely needed.
About three, I think.
Christina, if I, even with him there, have gone back sometimes.
So much fun, I love it.
Because there's just so, depending on the day, like pizza day, you got the line going out the door, you don't have somebody there like helping out.
I have been hearing about the principal sightings in the...
In the cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
Oh, my God, they're like, you got to talk up this kale. I'm like, you got it. Do you want to try this? It's so good. They're like, no, I'm like, yes, you do.
Vermont children know from kale.
And I will tell you this, on Wednesday, right, you're going to have your Thanksgiving feast, and it's going to look very much like it was at Weathersfield last week. They did his earlier. You need to come and see. I mean, I know you've already eaten here a lot, but it was incredible what was laid out.
Oh, my gosh, he's going to collapse after this dinner.
And the community dinner's on Monday.
And tomorrow's Portrait of a Graduate, he's cooking for that, and he's cooking, oh, my gosh.
So should we just put a collar to Craig if he wants extra hands again?
Sure, he would like that, for sure.
He would love.
For the community.
For the community.
For the community dinner.
There were like eight turkeys he was getting ready today.
I know.
Or seasoning up.
I know, and he's using real turkey, you roast them overnight. It's crazy though. But it's so, and I, I'll tell you, Weatherfield was packed and everybody loved it. They'll, they'll never go back. You know, they, they just love what they've seen, which is good. But we can run those numbers that way, but in, in the perfect world, you know, what I would do is I would have everybody the SU employees, do you know what I mean? And then I would parcel it out, and then we'd just run that SU budget. But we're still sort of hybrid right now, so I understand why it's confusing.
So all the food service staff are still SU employees, like Devin and...
No, so this just includes...
They're Heartland employees.
They're Heartland, okay.
Okay, so this increase, I was thinking it includes Windsor's employees, but it doesn't.
No, it doesn't. Windsor's eating their employees in their budget.
Right, and so this is the increase in food and staff required.
Yeah, that's what it is, yeah.
Okay, okay, then that makes...
No, no, Windsor will keep their, because there'll, there'll be three separate, again, in the perfect world, I kinda put it all together, but I know it's, I, you know, I think we need to be hybrid for a while, while we watch this. But, but really, I think the question is, how are we splitting that final cost of all this stuff, the food, you know? And, and I'll run that with, see if it makes a big difference if we go by student count versus equalized pupil. But no, you're not paying for Windsor's employees.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, I was like, that would be way too little.
What's non-technology repair slash MA, because that's going up to twenty thousand dollars for twelve hundred.
Repair of kitchen equipment?
That's a good question. I, I could ask.
Non-technology repair MAs.
Do you wanna circle that one?
Yeah, I'll circle that one.
That's the only thing that was made up, I have no idea.
I know, but otherwise, you did a good job.
Oh, I see it, I see it, I see it.
Yeah, food's going down.
Oh yeah, non-technology. Food local.
And Craig often V A'd tonight, but I said...
Local is going up, oh, that's interesting, and that's going down, I see.
Well, he had put in a new line of purchasing of local food, and that's, that's fifty thousand that he's designated for that.
Well, see, that's where those increases are coming from, right?
Well, not even increases, I mean, it's also just putting his, he's putting in a budget line, like, this is huge in the sense of like, he's putting in a budget line, his commitment, or the program's commitment to spend fifty thousand dollars into our local economy.
Exactly.
It's just twenty percent of the budget, like, that's exciting.
That's, that's really cool, actually.
Yeah, so that's something to like...
That's something to share with a reporter.
To share with the community, or with a reporter, right?
Seriously, I mean, that, there's a really interesting story there, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's like hyper-local.
Yeah, not necessarily. So he might, he might buy, like, it's...
It's, it's a little hyper-local, all right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, could be, you know, Guy Crosby's cow, and, um, you know, and local, some local veggies and stuff from Deep Meadow and things like that. But it could be, um, if he can get a relationship with a food hub, he could be buying a little more regional, I guess. So he could be buying, you know, more stuff that's, you know, coming maybe down from, you know, down Brattleboro, you know, north where like Food Connects is, and then up this way, so, but...
But, but not...
But not California parents.
But food, food would be the Reinhardt stuff?
The food line, right, the food line.
Yeah.
So a lot of, so Reinhardt's not necessarily all California stuff.
No, right. No, and it's also like food in there too, he'll also...
They buy regionally.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they're not gonna go buy, you know, California, you know, apples. You know, like, it's not, it's more economical to be buying that kind of stuff here.
But he also has all his food, you know, flour.
Yeah, I mean, he also has his commodity foods and stuff that he's able to spend, and I don't think that's probably...
Has anybody had the pizzas since they've started baking it? Tried it?
Brittany, I have.
It's outrageous. It is outrageous. I mean, I...
What did you have, the chicken barbecue ranch, or what?
I had the chicken barbecue, it was, yeah, it was last Friday, right?
Buffalo chicken.
It was outrageous. I, I went in and I just said to my...
The crust is so good.
Oh, it's crazy. It's definitely crazy.
For the Wednesday, um, to, to come and eat with the kids, is it okay, like, can grandparents come too? Okay, that's like, anyone's welcome.
We invited the whole community, yes, they did want an RCP to, so they know how much to cook, yeah.
I will do that, yeah.
And you're inviting your school community Wednesday, right? Are parents coming too?
Linda's keeping track. She's got, yeah.
But the community meal on Monday, you don't need RCP for, but we should probably get that out more.
Yeah, yeah, Lissur.
It's in my calendar.
We've been, we've been blasting it, but where else should we put it?
I don't know, I just...
I can put it in the town, on the Lissur?
Yeah, it's on the Lissur.
It is, okay. Yeah, it is.
But since it's coming up, it would be good to have it, you know, show up on Thursday or Friday when people are thinking of it.
I've been avoiding this.
We could have a, yeah, maybe they want to place it to put up on...
And then that number's gonna just stay, stay through Christmas.
That's next month, right?
Yeah.
Eight million, well...
No, she can put bigger than this, I think.
We don't have any board meetings, huh?
No.
On the eighteen?
No, we have a community dinner.
I, I mean, just Weatherfield...
Twenty dollars in taxes.
It's tonight's, the eighteen day.
Oh, the twenty-fifth.
Here tonight?
No, mainly because, um, it changed to the twenty-first.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, ready?
I've got it.
Right, okay.
Oh, I have a question about food, sorry. Is there any thought or consideration around summer meals?
Is it good for the school?
Yes. I mean, we haven't obviously started the official planning, we haven't even started anyone's...
That's something to attach it.
Yeah, and Craig's interested in trying to get that going.
Well, we have some, so it's, now that we're over fifty percent, we've qualified to offer summer meals, um, at various sites in the community. It doesn't have to be at the school, like, you could have it at the library during like, like, like booktime or whatever, and, um, it's just a free lunch from birth to eighteen, anyone can come and get it.
Oh, I've seen that at the Windsor rec.
We have to be fifty percent? We're at forty-seven, once the direct serves, yeah, the directs, yeah.
It's not direct certification, it's just free and reduced.
No, no, we were at, we were at fifty and then...
Yeah, that's fine, if we were fifty to, at some point in the year.
Oh, okay. It doesn't have to be current, got it, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a second point in the year.
I believe we were.
We've dropped, which is great, but...
We're at forty-seven, something, yeah, um, because it's a ti, it's a date and time, and the direct serves go off direct, I'm learning. They have to recertify at a certain time.
Yeah, and so direct certification is, it's like you're on SNAP, um, you're classified as small list or foster or whatever, it's a direct meeting. You don't have to fill out the form, it's directly certified.
In September, right.
Different times of year, people come in on and off the list, yes.
Oh, gotcha, that's interesting.
Um, but there's another thing that like, if you can, whoever's looking at that list, I was just actually in a meeting today, talking about how to examine your direct certification list really closely, because you could be missing, like, sometimes you'll know, the, people say they all the time will see one sibling on the list and notice the other two or something like that. And that can really affect your rates, and then you're missing a whole bunch of, um, other benefits from the school and stuff like that.
It was interesting.
So if you have any other questions when you look at this, just shoot them to me by email, and I'll, I'll get back.
Okay. Um, here's our, here's what our tuition is looking like with our preliminary school choices, it's dropped?
Yeah, that's a huge drop.
That's a good drop.
Well, we're, ten less kids makes a difference.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a good drop.
And where they're going, so...
Wait a minute, where's FY twenty-one?
Sorry. Oh, gosh, that should be, that's FY twenty-one, I'll fix it later.
Okay.
Ah, now what did I do?
Now what did you do?
I went too far. I think it's the next to last.
I would tell you, as a new principal, not to embarrass her, but she has a bit of him on her budget than... And, and I know the cameras are on with any of the other administrators, and I'm trying, I'm gonna use her presentation as a...
Better fix that first.
Well, fix that first, as a model, because...
I've been taking notes, it's, it looks...
There has to be ownership.
I've never understood it this instantly before, this is great.
Good, good.
Really works.
This is ours with Ed, me to some degree.
Good job.
But it's worth it, because we're not gonna nail it, we had to do hours later, and it's done.
You put it in sometime.
Yeah.
And he felt so confident in what she knew, that he didn't even feel that he needed to be here tonight.
How are we gonna do this? He's like, "You got it."
See you later.
Okay, got it.
Which meant I had to put it together, but whatever.
He liked that part.
Yeah, he did. He had his yesterday off, this is what I did. All right, so there we are, our grand total, which is an increase of, which I can tell you, because I have notes on it, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, I don't know if the food...
You're gonna do a grand reveal with like it fading in or something?
I should, like, shh, I, I could. That is a one point four eight increase on expenditures, that obviously doesn't affect the CLA.
Correct.
Common level of appraisal.
Well, the tax rate.
The tax rate, but that's where we're at.
So, and that is including that extra staff position?
It is.
And, you know, I think as we discussed, we can also, we can kind of take out the SRO position, and, I mean, as, as we talk about this and say, this is something that we are doing because it's not, we have to, in other places in the town budget, and the whole community decided that we should, could do this here, so, you know, that's, really, it's only about a hundred thousand or under a hundred thousand, if you think about it, yes.
They're not done petitioning the select board to do something on policing in town.
Yeah.
Because they said if we had that, then we wouldn't need to, if we contracted with Windsor as a town, we wouldn't need this extra amount of money.
Exactly.
In a budget, or if we did, we'd be supplementing, so, so they, they haven't forgotten that.
Yeah, they've been very responsive and, uh, no, the, the SRO, the Windsor, I mean, the chief has come to check in to see how things are going.
It's great.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a good, good start. We do have a meeting December third, is that what we scheduled? I need to send out a reminder, just to check in on how we're doing, the committee.
Oh, that was that check-in with the committee.
I will send an email reminder.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, honestly, we don't let students meet individually with Officer Paul unless their parents are in, actually, they've asked, actually.
Yeah, everyone we've had has asked, yeah. It's not even that you're asking them, they're asking you.
They're asking us, um, and he, and he handles it really well. Um, he's very, uh, he's kind about it, but he's, this is what's gonna happen. Um, and shares his own experiences as a, as a kid, which helps relate, um, so we've been really impressed with him so far. And that is the end of the budget presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're gonna send that to us?
I'm gonna share it with you, yes. Do it right now. Yeah, you're very well, it's a pleasant, a very pleasant presentation. It, it seemed a simple way to share it, or show it without, I mean, in the past, I've shown like elementary, secondary, and it gets very muddy when you move people around, and people ask questions about it, so this seems very cut and dry.
Very clear, yeah.
Um, yes. Are there any questions or things you're wondering about that?
David, David, is this just the food? Is changing food for next year?
That's just the food budget for next year, including the food they'd need to buy for Windsor.
Brittany, would you like this?
All that centralized stuff, shared stuff.
All right.
I have a small question around...
Again, if you have questions, but, but Windsor's goes up substantially because they're taking on the benefits of all those employees, salary and benefits.
The five oh four, the five oh four stuff we were talking about before. How many five oh fours does the school have?
Well, we just, we just talked about that today.
We have, uh, let's say...
I can unplug and look.
It's not gonna be exactly.
If you want, need to look it up.
Yeah, it's gotta be like twelve that are on currently, and then we have ten referrals.
In the, in the pipeline to be written, at this point.
It's not exact.
Twelve kids?
Twelve that are currently, yeah, twelve five oh fours that are currently active, and we have ten new referrals.
And then, yeah.
Right, across the whole school, for...
Okay, so by the end, when Gene is done, and, you know, we're encouraging him to train our, uh, other guidance counselor to help with it, because it is a process. Um, some schools have a five oh four coordinator that's separate, you know, it's not a guidance counselor. But, um, Gene does it for us, he does it very thoroughly. Sometimes it takes him a while because he is, he's very thorough about it. Gets feedback from all the teachers, meets with the special educators, if that's appropriate, um, meets with the parents. So he's, um, he's feeling a little overwhelmed right now with that, and doing his other, you know, um, his other responsibilities for his job, so...
I noticed the budget line was for like twenty-five thousand-ish?
Yep.
What are some of the things that go into that?
So that's students that are on five oh fours that need, um, yeah, consult, we have a contract with the, um, uh, I'm gonna get it wrong, visually impaired, they come in and they'll help us make sure we're meeting the needs of children that have visual impairments. Um, that sometimes means equipment as well, so that kids can see, sometimes it's speech, OT, PT, those kinds of services. So we've, um, budgeted based on the kids that we know need some additional services or equipment.
Thank you. That was it. I'm just interested in a little more about...
I think we have a number to keep an eye on, because I know the town will recognize it, right? I mean, when you looked at your enrollment numbers, right? I mean, because, you know, you've, you've been as high in the last five years as three hundred and thirty kids, right?
And now we're coming down.
Two seventy-four, so you, you're facing the same demographic challenges that every other town, and probably the Upper Valley is facing right now, but...
And I'm also, we were really high last year, um, and everybody paired with us.
Yeah, we did.
And we're...
With the budget.
Right. And whether it was going to stay the same.
So there, yeah, there is a, I, I, I'm having a little bit of that as well, that, you know, is there something we can, is there something we can do to kind of say, you know, we understand that?
Yeah, thank you.
And I think that what it comes down to is the personnel changes that we've discussed.
Yeah, and just where the...
Where and how and when, right?
And, and, and if a decision has to be made, what, what would the priority be?
Yeah.
I guess would be, that, I would, from, you know, from you two, I, that would be what I would want.
It's a tough communication piece to, to try to get across the fact that this is the trajectory, but with with less students, we're not, we're plateauing at some place, less than like the highest possible extra expense.
Exactly.
So it's still this, comes across this.
And, and the attentive taxpayer, which they, most of them are in Heartland, you know, they're gonna also notice that you do have that differential of ten high school. You know, so that was a savings of a hundred and ninety, two hundred thousand, do you know what I mean? So, so when we come in with a one point four percent increase, you know, they...
We have other savings.
You have other savings, other places that we're sort of filling that, that hole, and that's not a criticism, I mean, I think it is what it is, and you're also, you know, you're also managing a, a different population than you managed five to ten years ago, you know? And I think there's always that, but I think there's a balance there somehow, to communicate that.
There's no recognition from the state that we're dealing with a different, and I'm worried that we're gonna head up against the, um, the penalty, the spending penalty, yeah.
Have you talked to Ed about that?
I don't think, well, he hasn't, until he gets that tax work sheet done. I don't think with that expenditure line you will though, I mean, you'd need a...
We did last year.
Did you go over it, or you, you came close?
We were very slight, we were very slightly over, but then we offset with what we used.
Wasn't the increase a pretty substantial increase last year?
It was.
In the expenditure line?
Yeah, no, it was.
But we were able to offset. But, but losing ten students...
That's true.
We're gonna, the, the per...
You mean in terms of that per pupil?
That per pupil is going to be, uh...
We haven't figured that route outside out yet.
Okay.
No, we can't do the math until the last second, when the state...
That's always the way it works sadly.
What we need.
Yeah, because in the perfect world, a one point four percent increase overall in that big a budget is, it sounds reasonable, ostensibly reasonable, but when you start factoring in all those other pieces...
Yeah, I mean, and, and I think that is why it's important to say, you know, twelve point nine percent healthcare increase, and kind of put that, put that over here, we have absolutely no control over that. And the SRO position, I think, as we talked to the town, we have to say, this is something for the public safety of our school that we have to do, but we don't, we shouldn't be paying for this, um, out of the school budget, and...
I learned another thing today, the state, and I forget what the act was, but, but in two thousand and fifteen, passed a law that every new teacher you hire now, you pay a retirement surcharge. Did, did, did you know that? I mean, it, it, it started off at about a thousand dollars per teacher, now it's up to thirteen hundred dollars. And by the way, that surcharge, so for anybody that was hired after two thousand and fifteen...
It was just a backdrop.
Right, in, in, including, right? Right, in, in, including, right?
I guess.
You will, right?
Yeah, I didn't know.
So, so there's a surcharge, you know, on Christine's retirement of, now it's up to almost thirteen hundred dollars and that's annual.
Does it discourage people from hiring new teachers or what's the point of that?
Well, I, I think the point from the state level was to recharge the retirement.
To recharge, oh, I see, okay.
So that's the way, that's the way they did it.
But it's brand new, it's brand new.
It's brand new. It's like, it's brand new teachers. Anybody you've hired, anybody you've hired since two thousand and fifteen, so
But they don't have to be a brand new teacher.
No.
First year teacher.
They're new to the district.
Got it. New to the district.
I mean
So we were looking at the names, you know, Heartland had four or five.
Yeah.
This year you've got about ten that are getting that extra
So you pay that to the state?
And that goes to the state, to the state retirement fund.
Every year.
It just showed me that today. I said, really? And then we went to look at the act. We went to look at the law.
Yeah.
And sure enough, it's, it's, it's one of those kind of things that probably got passed as, at, you know, the last minute in a budget bill or something and
Just to hit you a little bit harder.
I know.
So that's reflected in our assessment.
Is that in here?
He's got it in that budget. He said, yeah, make sure you tell them it's in that budget if it comes up tonight, not that you would bring it up. But I thought I should because it turned out to be, I mean, I should have brought the number with me, but it's like sixty thousand dollars or something total for this year. Right? Or close to forty.
For the SU.
Maybe that was the SU.
Yeah, it's gotta be the SU.
Might have been across the SU.
Yeah.
Still.
Good chunk of money.
Yeah, but it's also an incentive maybe not to try to keep his staff. I don't know.
Yeah.
It already is, but yeah. It just doesn't seem right, does it?
No.
No.
It doesn't seem to It's, right, it's
Yeah.
So does the, um, the food budget on our side for next year do anything to, um, keep? What, what can we do to so that there's, um, students don't, um, find themselves owing this, this lunch program money?
What can we do about that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'd, I want to, there, I would rather us budget now
There's a lot of things we could do to help with that.
You mean for the debt, if, if there is any debt.
Yeah, some kind of a fund.
Well, we did get, we did have a donation actually today.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
That comes up almost annually, doesn't it?
This year, around this time, we have a community member that comes in and pays off the lunch debt today.
That's great, huh? That's so sweet. Merry Christmas.
I know, and it's anonymous. I don't even know who it is. The person will
That's sweet.
But I think there, there is some things that we can put into play to help with that. Um, making sure that, you know, it goes out regularly, that people are gonna apply for those, for, that they can reduce. Anytime if they have any change of income. You can always apply, um, you know, having at different events, making sure there's signage of saying, hey, do you need assistance to sign up? The, the, the form, it can be daunting. Um, it's not super easy. So to have, and anyone can help families fill it out. It's just once it's, they're certified, like that
Right.
is like sacred. You don't know that.
Right.
But like the guidance counselors and things like that can be working with families.
Can help a parent fill it out, right.
So I think even just getting more staff, understanding that that
How to do it.
can be done. And it's also like, and a understanding too that this is connected to Title One funding and all this other stuff. So even if their kid never eats a meal here, it's benefiting the school.
Right.
So let's help you figure it out even though that might be a shot to your pride.
That's in the letter that I send with the application at the beginning of the year, but we could certainly send that out periodically. We haven't done that.
And also just, yeah, I think just making staff aware, like, and if there's, if there's a flag that you're thinking there is a kid that hmm, something's up there, maybe they really need to be on this.
Yeah.
Is there a way to refer that to guidance to dig into it a little bit with a family and maybe try to get
Yeah.
just to have that awareness more.
Some schools just serve universal meals, Scott.
That's another thing we can
Yeah, that's my next, next question, like
Yeah.
With our, and there's, there's a couple different ways to become eligible. And with participation rates so high, you basically can get in and get certified with your particip- so say we're at, we're serving seventy percent of the kids every lunch. For the next four years, you get certified and you get paid, you get reimbursed from the federal government at that seventy percent rate. That means the school is paying thirty percent or the, it's the, would be paying that thirty percent difference to cover it all.
If you did universal meals.
If you did universal meals and you can do universal breakfast and lunch that way. Um, and so it's looking at the budget and saying, well, what if our school meals are so awesome, eighty percent of the kids are eating them already, then let's really look and see what that universal meal option looks like because maybe that price difference is really not that big of a deal with the, what we're paying and subsidizing already.
Yeah.
It may be fairly close, but we'd have to dig into that a little.
Yeah.
It, I mean, it might be worth it.
It might be worth doing it.
while for the board to look at those numbers and kind of have a conversation about, um, it certainly seems to be something that in terms of our values, we would support doing, so.
Are we at that percentage with kids eating? Are they doing eighty percent?
Well, we're, I think last time we looked at it was like two hundred lunches a day.
We'd have to look at those numbers.
We're at like seventy something.
You're usually, you're close to sixty, seventy percent, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we're up there.
That's huge.
And that's the students' own.
Yeah.
That's students' own, I think, yeah.
Employees in the building.
Yeah.
And employee count is up too, right?
It is.
So, I mean, that's something I can certainly reach out to Hunger Free Vermont and they can help pull together the data to make it sense to us.
That would be great to know.
That would be good to know.
Because it, I mean, the, the system that we have almost, well, it's been two years now. It just kind of like sets up parts of our community to work, it's as a big, it's a big challenge.
And the, the whole business is that if, if it's really good food, like if we're getting served really good food, everybody wants to eat it. So it doesn't matter if you're free and reduced or you're pay or whatever. And so that's a real, I, I'm happy with that fact that it's, you know, every kid wants to eat and so it's, it's not just like, oh, well, it's just the free and reduced kids because the meals are good, you know, like
And then there's community support for the program across the board and I think
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very, I don't know what this anonymous gift is and it, I can, I sort of remember what it was last year. But, and it's not, in, in the, these kind of numbers, it that, that gift is not too big a piece.
No, it's not.
But, but it's still
Makes a difference for them, yeah.
It's still, still kind of a representative of like perhaps the board not quite being in touch with the community. And so I don't, that's what troubles me about that. Just, I don't we shouldn't be we shouldn't have this system that almost relies on an annual
Debt.
gift.
Or gift.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're not hearing our community in, in a, in a sense.
But there's many reasons debt occurs. It's not just because I, they can't afford the meal as well.
Forget it.
It's our gift from mom. At test, right? That concerns me a little bit about the gift. Because the gift is subsidizing families who
Let me clarify that we're gonna go through the list and
Oh, good.
determine who gets the debt waived.
I'm so glad because that, that concerned me a little bit that it might be paying, you know.
Your debt?
Right. I'm so glad that you have told me that.
No, Linda and I are gonna go through it and just
I'd love to see, and I don't know if Craig's talked about using a different system than mealtime.
Uh, he has talked about, he has talked about that.
Because they only give you one alert. And so
Really?
if you get your one alert and you're like, oh, okay, I gotta take care of that this week. And then two weeks go by, well, you're in the hole.
But they've been better. You haven't gotten a note home?
Oh, no, no.
He's, he's trying to trying to send a note home.
Yes, exactly.
I am.
Bright colors.
Green, yellow.
My kids aren't so good at the backpack thing.
You may not be seeing the
Exactly.
But, yeah, but they've also
Check the bottom of that backpack.
They have been running those.
Yeah.
He's been trying to send those notes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, yeah.
How do those notes get applied? Like, is there some dis-
As how what?
Is it discreetly handled when you're telling a kid to tell their parents they're
Pay up.
in the hall?
My kid like holds it up at pickup and is like, hey, mom, look.
You owe money. You owe money.
But I think that
I think it's just given to the
On the other end, it's discreet.
I don't know how confidential it is. It's a good question, Colin.
My guess is it probably are handed to the teacher and then the teacher puts them in a folder.
Long as they're not getting yelled at by the
No, there's no
lunch lady or something.
The actual policy is not to hold a kid accountable at all.
You can't.
Great.
We feed everybody.
This year have been
We've gotten away from the sun butter sandwiches.
much, much more positive and
Great.
you know, just the interactions with the kids are
It's great.
Yeah, I have noticed. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It's been nice.
That's good.
Let's go home.
Just to be safe.
To totally switch gears, one, one more thing, um, back to the, talk about the tech center and as it was relating in our conversation to maker space and or robotics and the different library scene now. I don't, that's one thing that, um, I can't remember this board has much of a connection to the tech center, but in, with all the you know, um, rising interest in um, tech, um, education, workforce development in our state and, and the, there's much emphasis on perhaps introducing that whole um, environment to, in the middle school setting, you know, what because we don't have our high school, we're not part of a high school, so no one on this board ever, as far as I know, goes to a tech center committee meeting, you know, because on a statewide basis, I mean, one of the discussions is, I mean, what part of, what in, what part of, uh, instruction will shall happen in a formal tech center setting? And what might happen at the high school? And I think there's, there's actually, I don't think it would be going out on a limb too far to say there's a little butting heads about that because folks in the tech center are kind of protective about what they have done in the past and maybe what their future aspirations are. And and with declining enrollment, um, kind of overlaying everything, high schools are more competitive about what they want to offer. Because when students leave the high school, then there's a different funding stream. And so I guess there's many questions here, Dave, but how, is there any way that someone from this board or the school can be a part of those tech center conversations or, I've talked to Chris Garandos before, he's the
He's the, he's the Windsor, or Mount Scutney now, board representative to the regional advisory board.
Yeah, yeah.
And I sit on that board too as your representative, so I'm there.
Good.
Chris and I go together and I, I mean, the simple answer to your question is probably no, because you don't have a high school. If you had a high school, then you'd, you'd have a, you'd have one vote on that regional advisory board.
And this is the Hartford Tech.
This is the Hartford Tech, right? And so, yeah, because that's our region, right? That's our region, yeah. So Chris and I go together, I technically I guess represent all of our schools, but
Yeah, well, I, I, I thought it was a board member, so I'm glad that you're there.
No, I go.
Because you, you do represent all of us.
Yeah, I go.
Well, I would love to hear like, what's the skills, like, are we prepping within this maker space? Like, is it assumed that, you know, everyone will know how to do their laser cutter thing by the time they get to high school and maybe that is a priority?